Would I be correct to summarize and say that essentially? Oh, can everyone move your mics out? Yeah, okay. See if my one... No, it's not. Actually, you can use the portable one. No, yeah, it's the portable. I didn't know if you... Did you want to leave these here or just? I don't know if that came out of mine or... Good evening, welcome to the Monday, September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a phone, I ask that you place it on silent. I call this meeting to order, and we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Domingo, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Here. We'll begin this evening with two presentations. Hello? It's on? Okay, great. On behalf of the city of Albion, we want to congratulate Harry Longan on his retirement. This is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of exemplifying outstanding public service and the highest standards of professionalism as a mechanic, superintendent, and deputy director of the Albion Department of Public Services for thirty-one years. Harry was the driving force behind several of the computerized tracking and documentation forms of the city, of the streets, parks, and cemetery units. Harry's knowledge of all things public works will be greatly missed. The city expresses our great appreciation and best wishes on your retirement. And, first give you a round of applause.
Well, it's been great, and I do miss it. And, I get up in the morning and I wonder what I'm gonna do today, but I don't have to worry no more because my wife takes care of that. The honeydew list keeps growing and growing, and it's like, I need to come out of retirement so I can go to work. So, but I miss everything. I loved what I did, and I just hope that I, you know, did well with the city and stuff. Because the city is growing, and I want to see it grow and be nice and, you know, for all people. So, thank you.
Again, congratulations to Harry and thank him for his service to the city. We also have an Arbor Day proclamation that we do annually. We don't have a representative here today to receive that, but a copy of that's in the packet. I guess I can read it very quickly. Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the special day called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by abating wind and water, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas the pioneers and our forefathers and mothers, knowing the necessity and true and value of trees, brought trees with them on their long and hard journey, and these trees are living legacies in our community, and whereas trees in the city of Albion will increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community and our source of joy and renewal, and whereas the city of Albion has realized the importance of the urban forest and has been instrumental in enhancing the management of this precious resource, now therefore I gear Brown Mayor of the city of Albion to hereby proclaim, well, it's kind of early in the year, but it's in April. Arbor Day in the city of Albion and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to promote the well-being of this and future generations. So, that's our Arbor Day proclamation for this year. We'll go on, there's no public hearings, public comments. Persons addressing the city council, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum and to state your name and address. Are there any public comments this evening on agenda items only? Please come forward.
Evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Smith, I'm at twelve oh nine, Adams Street. Our city has been without a city manager for over a six-month period now. And going into the new election cycle, which is only up to seven weeks away, that extra length of time is not going to make any difference in how the city operates. I don't feel that it would be fair of the mayor or the sitting council to saddle the upcoming administration with your particular and personal choice. As you've always said that you like to do the right thing, sir, it would be in the interest of this city not to follow a personal agenda. Do the right thing now. Table the selection of a new city manager until the new administration sits. Allow them to make the right choice. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening on the agenda?
Dave Atchison, one oh eight West Dairy, here in Albion. My comment is about the selection of the city manager, or actually, what's on the agenda is your discussion and approval of the offer of employment. I commend some of the council members who were there Friday and sat through the entire session and showed professionalism and courtesy to all four candidates. And for those council members who chose to select those who they came and listened to, I think that shows very poor judgment. It sets the tone, and there were between thirty and forty members of the community, most of which are fully aware of who was there and wasn't there, how long, which council member was there. And it did not go unnoticed that your voting bloc showed up in force for one candidate and none of the rest of them, so that will not be ignored. It's inappropriate, it's unethical, and you should be taken and held accountable for that.
Is there any further public comment this evening on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the regular session minutes from September fourth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. Item A, discussion approval of a conditional offer of employment for the city manager position. Is there a motion of the candidates? Is there, you have to give me... Is there a particular candidate?
Oh, that we want to discuss?
Yeah, we have to make a motion.
We can start with candidate number four.
Mr. Patrick.
Okay, so there's a motion for Mr. Patrick, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay, we'll have discussion. Is there any discussion? Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. So, once again, as we gather for the appointment of a city manager, having gone through this now twice, we're left with two candidates, both qualified. One, in my opinion, more qualified than the other. One has been a city manager in the state of Michigan, is well-connected to all the appropriate state boards and entities, has had success in economic development, has had success in building community. And the other, with less experience, no city manager experience whatsoever, does have good economic opportunity or economic development, has been able to get money from the state of Illinois, which in the current budget situation in Illinois is quite a feat. But again, I would vote that we would approve Mr. Reagan as our next city manager based on the fact that he is the more experienced candidate with respect to city management. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as Mr. Patrick, I do believe that he did speak very clearly. My only concern was that he talked about the downtown area more than anything. For me, Mayor, and council, and people that are watching and that are here today, I absolutely feel that the downtown is going to flourish whether council has anything to do with it or not. It is definitely going to do what it does. I feel that Amy has it all under control. Yeah, the city manager probably do have some input in it, but Dr. Dobbins, Mr. Shaheen, and Amy are going to make sure that it is okay. As far as the other candidate, my thing for her is she expressed diversity. I think it is good for Albion's fit. She expressed the less fortunate and the poverty. And she also expressed that she had buildings that were torn down and rehabilitated for seniors, which another candidate expressed that we should put seniors in our downtown area. I do not want to see our seniors up high. They are unbalanced sometimes, some are, some are not. I would rather for them to be as close as possible to one level. You know, how would they carry their groceries upstairs or their laundry upstairs? So, that was kind of a good fit for me. The one candidate had great experience dealing with, if not her own, poverty and being low-income. And I keep saying low-income because we tend to forget about others that live here. And we absolutely do. There's no way to overlook it. So, that is my concern. I want to thank everyone that emailed me or called me about Mr. Reagan and about Mrs. Rufus. But one email in particularly that I really, really appreciated was one that had all the candidates and all the strengths. It did not tell me who to vote for. It gave me points of what each candidate's strength was and what each candidate's weakness was. So, the person knows who sent me that email, and I very much gratefully appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
I need to go the long route with this because I believe regionalization makes us better together. I contact what I describe as my cabinet. John Condalick, Arkeel from Homer, Jim Dyer of Marshall, Robert Dunklin of the Albion branch of NAACP, Harry Bonner, Dr. Cheryl Mitchell, and Rob Reed. I look at these as a cabinet of advisors with professional executive experience, public service, elective office, financial planning, and community leadership background. I feel this decision required input from the electorate of Albion and day-to-day professionals. It's tough for me because I'm a black man living in one of the poorest neighborhoods in Albion, the East Broadwell Housing Projects, which is public housing. On a day-to-day basis, after I cast my vote, I must face and interact with my beloved people and explain why I chose a white man over a black woman. That is just the reality of it. The best candidate must be selected regardless of race, color, or national origin. It's what we...
Is that a vote?
He can state it.
Can he state that regardless of the candidates?
Yes, I can. I didn't say a name or anything like that.
I guess I would just say that any determination made by any member of the council has to be race-neutral.
Exactly.
That's what I'm stating.
National origin.
I'm stating, I'm stating race-neutral because I'm not selecting it based on that criteria or qualifications. I must explain to my people what I'm doing. I got to live with them. Now, it's what we as a black people must stand up and expect of ourselves and others in society. I feel after talking with my advisors, reading the resumes, attending half of the first interview and the complete second part of the interviews, I truly feel at this point, a C-plus would be the highest grade I could give any of them. And at the rate of six figures, a hundred thousand plus possibly, to lead a city in a critical situation like this could use a new pool. However, I shall not interrupt this process, and based on the qualifications of Reagan, who had city manager experience, the energy, the know-how, and he recognized that the template starts downtown of success. A template of success is a template of experience, and you grow on that. Albion is a founding and original member of the Michigan Municipal League, a league of cities with common interests. We must, as a people, come together in this community regardless of anything other than us being human beings, and I support Reagan as our new city manager.
I'm sorry, I cut this thing off. I just don't know why.
Is there any further comment from the council this evening? Okay, so, you know, I received, I'm not going to read what resident sent it to me, but I did receive an email, and I'm going to read the email and then I'm going to read my response. So, Mayor Brown, I urge you to table the appointment of the new city manager for the next seven to eight weeks. The city manager needs to work closely with all council members and the city council members in November. After the election should make this decision. And my response was, thanks for reaching out, and I'm going to finish reading the email. Any delay or second candidate search is at the discretion of the majority of city council, not me individually. Also, any delay or second search would cost the city more money, would almost ensure that the current finalists would not reapply, would harm the city's reputation among other potential candidates, and would leave the city short-staffed during budget season and ongoing projects. Council manager government means that a non-political, non-partisan, non-biased, professionally-trained city manager helps the council to implement its policies and goals through research, staff management, and technical advice. An expert in city governance explained to the council, I guess twice, in January and a couple months ago, but earlier this year, that, quote, "Any good city manager knows to stay out of politics," unquote. Which means that city managers must go with the policy decisions that council makes and not with their own opinion on an issue. Whether or not, and this is my email, whether or not I'm mayor after November sixth, the idea of council manager government is that the city manager will work at the council's discretion and will work with and not against whoever the elected officials are that voters pick. I think in the concern that I'm hearing regarding the delay, I think it evidences a misunderstanding of basically what we're doing here. The manager really is here, whether it's me or anyone else in our seats, to help them implement, as I believe it was candidate, Mrs. Duffy, Duffy, who was one of the candidates, said during her answer to, I think, question ten in the questioning about the relationship between council and the manager. Her explanation was, is that the elected officials run, they have platforms and agendas based on what they've promised to the electorate. And when we are here, we together figure out through votes what the direction and goals of the city are. So, whether the manager is Mr. Reagan, whether it's Ms. Duffy, whether it's Mr. Watson, whether it's Ms. Rufus, that should have, the outcome of election has nothing to do with how they should do their job. And in fact, if it does, then that person's not being a good city manager. Because their role is not to be an intermediary to council on the behalf of factions in the community on policy decisions. It's basically to make sure that the state-required basic services that all cities are required to have are provided in a quality fashion and timely. And the council is here to translate the concerns of residents into policy. So, the council does policymaking, the manager does implementation and administration. And that's the, as one of the candidates said, there's that line there, and it's not the manager's role to cross that line. And it's the council's role to stay in our positions as well. So, I think that any attempt to say that we should push it back really shows that there's a lack of understanding about what the role of the manager is. Whoever's here, that manager has to follow what the voters have done in an election. Is there any further comment on Mr. Reagan, on the nomination that we have so far? Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to, just to mention that Mr. Reagan did have a lot of strength. He did know a lot of people at the higher level that could, you know, help us. As far as another candidate, well, let me finish with him. He never said what his, the strengths that he have to offer us. He never said that he would use it for Albion as a whole. He only said that made it oppression to me, just to me, that he could use it for our downtown. And as I stated before, our downtown is going to flourish, whether, whoever it is. Another candidate that I had in mind, she had the experience in housing and poverty. Housing is one of the things that Albion struggles with. Poverty, as far as these houses and buildings and things like that, getting rehabbed or getting somebody to come in and take over and building something. She said that she had a building that she got a buyer to turn into a grocery store. She said she found a way to tear down a building and do senior housing. So, it's a lot of goals that Albion has for itself that a particular candidate can really, really bring to the table. But like I said, Mr. Reagan, he did, he does have the contacts, and he does know him just like that. But he never said to me that he would use it for the city as a whole. Now, our downtown is going good. What about the rest of the downtown places that need, like our urban on Austin Ave? What about our Eaton Street corridor? I never heard him say anything about that. So, as far as him having these connections and things like that, I was trying to see if any of our candidates that really did their research and see how we were struggling with our corridors, with our Austin Ave, with our senior housing, with our buildings that need to be torn down, such as Union Steel. And not only just tearing them down, but putting something there so that we can attract more people. So, that's kind of where I'm at. Mayor, council, people here tonight, and people that are watching.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawler. Councilmember Reed?
I think, when you go to a city, if you're trying to really, if you're trying to see about a city, you go to the city, you go to the city. You go to the downtown area to see the stores that they have, what they have to offer in the downtown area because that's a lot of what you're going to be dealing with when you want to make purchases. Now, the outlying areas, like you're talking about the Eaton Street area and the Austin Avenue area, I appreciate the fact that they're getting the downtown fixed up. Because for one thing, when a lot of people come in to buy businesses or to buy buildings, that's where they're going to go. They're going to go down there, and that's going to bring money into Albion to help build that area and other areas. And I showed this packet with a picture cut off to several people, and I just asked them to read it over and see what you... and I, and I just asked them to read it over and see which one you thought was, had the most strength that could really get the city to move. And I got, got the answer that I knew that I would get. And it's because, I wouldn't go, if I was in a city and I'm going to see something, I'm not gonna go down Chestnut Street, I'm not gonna go down Center Street, I'm not gonna go down probably Urban Avenue or Erie, which are main streets. I'm not gonna go there first. I'm gonna go downtown and see what downtown has. And just like I said, when I first got on council and I took a walk down through town and I saw all the empty buildings with the ceilings falling and stuff like that, it looked as though we just needed to call somebody to put some dirt over us and just forget about it. But now, that's all changing and it's still got a lot to do before it's really gonna start looking like a prosperous city. Because a lot of the buildings still aren't being worked on because you don't start all of them, you start complete. You move over, you start complete. You move over, you start complete. And so, it's gonna take time even to do that. And then I say, I don't think that any of them meant that they would not do anything to the other areas. But you just can't jump, jump, jump. Something's got to be finished before it starts looking like a project well-done. And I, I, I think every one of them would, would think about working in the other areas too. And, and just like the mayor said, we make the policy. The city manager follows what the council makes as policy. So therefore, they have no other choice but to do what we would like directly to do. So that's where I am on that. I, I don't think any of them were, were really meaning that they weren't interested in other areas. It's just that this one has been started, so let's get it done. So that we can take the time, the energy, and the finances that's left and go to another area and do something.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So on Saturday after our interviews, I, I chose two candidates. And one of which was Mr. Reagan. During, I mean, he interviewed very well. He definitely has a lot of qualities. He was very focused on downtown and he referred to himself as a downtown geek. And I think everyone sitting here appreciates what's going on downtown. And looking for a city manager, you know, someone with the skill set of Mr. Reagan and, and all our candidates. Actually, we had a really strong candidate pool, in my opinion. In preparing to come into a community, you want to hear how their skills can be implemented to move the community forward. Mr. Reagan made no mention of our comprehensive plan. I don't know if he read it. He, based on a question I asked, didn't venture off anywhere other than the downtown area or interact with anyone other than patrons in the downtown area. We all know the importance of downtown. We also know there's a larger community and there's vision and they're many years ahead of us to plan. So when, when thinking about a leadership role in the community, looking at downtown, acknowledging downtown, wanting to be a part of that is very important. But more importantly, you have to look beyond. And that was the one piece that was missing for me, for this candidate. That's all I wanna say for now. I will have more to say, maybe. But, but as far as this candidate, I don't wanna harp on weaknesses or, I, I'm just trying to give you an idea of where I saw some gaps and where I saw some things that I would have liked to have heard and seen differently. So, thank you.
So any further comments? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe that we could go wrong with either candidate, Mr. Reagan and Ms. Rufus were my, they're my two top choices. And, and I think that they both bring a different skill set, ability, life experiences that could benefit Albion. Albion is unique in and of itself. And I think that, for me, I have to take a holistic view of Albion. I have to view every, think about every inn, every corner that is lacking and where improvement can be made. And thus, go with someone, with a candidate who I think can bring my vision, our vision, our policies to fruition. And so, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, I, I don't, I harp on downtown. It's great, it's wonderful, and I, I do think it is going to thrive at this point. There's too many dollars, grant dollars, money invested, and I don't see that that is going to change. I see it's going to continue. However, I do want us to focus on, well, we can focus on other areas of the city as well. So, you know, we have infrastructure issues there, grants that are available. Like Ms. Rufus did mention that she had earned X millions, fourteen million, if I'm not mistaken, of grant dollars from her state. So, you know, that was intriguing and Mr. Reagan had indicated that in the downtown area, what he would do, the city laws, and things like that. So, you know, I, that is, you know, improvement, and I can also appreciate that. However, I, I, for me, I, I want to select the candidate I think would have the entire, holistic of the city, Albion, as best interest at heart, so.
Is there any further comment from council? Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard from our, our council members about how they went about evaluating the candidates, and I think I agree with, with Councilwoman Spicer. The two would be equally happy, or almost equally happy with either of the two candidates. I also heard from some, some council people about what they were looking for in, in a city manager. And in a couple occasions, I heard how their experience, whether it be with poverty or with grant writing or what have you, would be an asset. But again, I have to go back to the email that our mayor just read to us in response to a community member asking that we table the process in that the reality, what we're looking for is sort of in that weird balance between a leader who our community can follow and someone who will listen to the leadership of our council in about implementing our, our government. And I think that what I struggle with is the last couple, three city managers that we've had have been sort of in different places along that spectrum of sort of vocal, outspoken leadership, I think of Cheryl Mitchell, versus the person who sits at his desk and gets the work of the city done, I think of Mike Herman. Both of them were outstanding city managers in their own right, both had strengths and weaknesses. But what they, but what they gained from working in Albion was a sense of community, a sense of the connectedness of our community. And so, as I try to decide who I want to support for a city manager, it comes down to the doing of the job of the city manager, which will be for, for our candidate under nomination right now, will be an easier road to hoe for him because he's lived his entire professional career in Michigan. So he understands the Michigan government, the state-level government. He's got experience with federal monies. And so, when it comes down to deciding, it comes down to is which of our city managers will have the easiest time in getting off the ground and being able to function as an effective city manager, doing the work that this council approves that manager to do. And so I think in the end-run, I'm gonna say the same thing I said before, a couple of times before when we've had city managers. I would like the city manager to be the one with the most city manager experience. So with that, I call the question.
Well, that's a motion. We have the vote to call the question.
I move that we call the question.
We don't really, is there, is there any further, well, is there a second to that? Okay. Is there any debate on that? I don't think it's necessary because I think everyone's commented, but all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. We're gonna go to a roll-call vote on the nomination of Mr. Reagan.
Councilmember Reed.
Mr. Reagan.
Yeah, Reagan, yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
Brown.
No.
Lawler.
No.
Spicer.
No.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
No. Is there a second nomination? Councilmember Brown.
I move that we, what's the word? Extend an employment offer to Latania Rufus for the position of city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ms. Rufus, and, and I wanna say, I watched the interviews again today for both candidates. And I believe when she exited off the highway, she immediately put on her thinking cap and started thinking, "How can my skill set be implemented in Albion?" Because she identified specifics. I mean, right off the bat, she, she talked about our street signs needing to be replaced and lighting needing to be better. She had read our comprehensive plan. She has extensive knowledge in budgeting. She talked specifically about, you know, how to process through developing a budget. She, I know spoke to employees at the hotel that she stayed at because I had two employees tell me that they had had conversations with her. She went in other, she drove through the city. She went in other areas other than downtown. She really came into this community and tried to really wrap her head around the sense of what this community is made of and what this community needed. And again, we had strong candidates. But those are the, those are the things that put her over the top for me. Just the sense of, of how she prepared herself to come in here and be a candidate for the community of Albion, not just a city manager position where she came in here prepared to be the city manager of Albion. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes.
This response is a total response to the process and which I saw occur with this candidate. I will state after her interview, and as you all know, I was texting Dr. Cheryl Mitchell as I interviewed her, as I explained to the young lady, so she wouldn't think I was disrespecting her. And I stated to Cheryl, "This could be your sister or your cousin," you know, saying how dynamic and how in-depth she was. And Cheryl did give me a, a response. I feel to serve is to give of oneself. The redevelopment of Albion is the major project to re-divi- revitalization of our city. However, I feel once again, this body has not used the service of office they hope to give to the Albion community. This weekend, we had dual interview sessions. Why two question-and-answer sessions were necessary, I'll never figure out. Moreover, why would the council make a new city manager selection within sixty days of a general election? The possibility of new leadership in the mayor's seat and possibly two new council members could change things drastically on the council. I believe this rush to selection is because some voting members are leery of the election outcome. There is a risk that the strength in voting will be in the minority in the future.
Point of order, Mayor. We are discussing extending an employment offer to Ms. Rufus. And what Councilmember Barnes is talking about is totally off-topic with that.
Excuse me, Mayor. I gave the same considerations and respect to council lawyer Lawler when she spoke on four different candidates when the motion was for one. And there was no point of order and no interruption, when there should have been a point of order from the chair because the motion, as she stated, "I'm out of order." Ms. Lawler mentioned four candidates when the motion was for Reagan only. I ask, this is directly related to the interview with, with Latania, Ms. Rufus.
Okay, so, and Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, I didn't call point of order on Councilmember Lawler. I'm calling point of order now because we're talking about offering a position and Councilmember Barnes is talking about the upcoming election in sixty days and that has nothing to do with this candidate, her strengths or weaknesses, and how he feels about whether or not we should extend the job.
Okay, I'll change, I wanna talk about the election.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Secondly, after having read resumes, researched, and interviewed the four candidates, I believe the information provided leads me to believe the best possible candidate is the one with the prior city manager experience and proven ability, ability to energize and administrate the rehabilitation of this populated city. However, I also believe this candidate pool of four individuals was not the strongest talent to lead Albion at this critical time. Councilmembers need to be reminded that they are charged by the electorate to make the best decision possible for all of our citizens. Each council member needs to go beyond their personal interests and do what is best for the cities as a whole. We need experienced leadership in the critical position of city manager. Transparency has ended with this voting strength. Our council is facing policy and procedure, procedure problems. The most suspicious part of this city manager interview was that the mayor walked out of the Luddington Building after the African-American candidate finished the question.
Point of order, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
That is a personal attack or a personal opinion about your, the timing of when you left that has nothing to do, again, with the offer that's on the table to extend employment to city manager candidate Ms. Rufus.
I, I rule in favor of, Councilmember Brown, that that's not, yeah, but... Can you confine it to the candidate? Okay.
However, the appearance of Junior Barnes leaving was brought to my attention after the second candidate.
Councilmember Barnes.
Okay, okay. I think that had, okay. No, no, I'm not done. I'm gonna finish. Councilmembers needed to be reminded of their charges now. Okay, I feel this council has made decisions for the public that has been divisive and ineffective in this process.
Point of order, Mayor. I'm asking that the council vote to stop Councilmember Barnes' statements. This is the third point of order I've called for the same exact reason. He is off-topic and he is making disparaging remarks against this council, which he's a part of.
Councilmember Barnes, we're, we're just, let me, okay, let me make a ruling. So I'm, I'm gonna make a ruling and then you can appeal if you wanna appeal to the council. I agree. We're, we're here to discuss candidates, their strengths, their weaknesses, what they bring to the city. It's veered into discussion of the election. It's veered into speculation about timing of entrances and exits at meetings. I, I, I think you should stop. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there, yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm, that was a, that was a...
I don't wanna appeal, no problem.
Okay. Is there any further, she, the motion was to restrict discussion.
From me?
Yeah. Well, it's actually, there's, there's not appealable, it goes to a vote.
Okay.
So we'll do, we'll do a roll-call vote. And this is to end discussion with Councilmember Barnes after three points of order.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
No.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
No.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Is there any further discussion from the council on the motion before us to offer the, make an, an offer to Ms. Rufus? Okay. So, I, I do have a comment, so, and I have, I have my evaluations from Saturday's evaluation.
I can't hear when this.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. We'd ask that the audience please refrain from talking because it's interfering. So, number two, the second, there were 13 questions that were uniformed across all candidates, and then the council had the ability to ask just kind of ad hoc questions. But number two, with Ms. Rufus, question two was based on your research and understanding of the city, what do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near term, and how would you approach those? And the four that, the four answers that were given to that question, one was economic development and business development. The second one was infrastructure. The third was housing, and the fourth was code enforcement. In my tenure on the council and in my tenure as mayor, these are the exact concerns that I continue to hear from residents. The need for more employment, the need for infrastructure. We're glad that we finally have Superior Street open, but there are many people in the city who do not have a quality, brand-new road in front of their property. Housing, as Councilmember Lawler spoke to earlier, I know their efforts are underway by a dedicated group of residents to, to ensure that seniors have additional housing in the community. And also code enforcement. The city in the last budget designated funds to hire a full-time code enforcement officer to deal with blighted properties, high grass nuisances in neighborhoods. I mentioned, or I kind of made reference to in my comment earlier in a response to an email from a resident, that the whole point of city exists at the basic level, is the state tells the cities, there are certain things, whether it's providing for public safety, whether it's providing for the disposal of waste, for the health and welfare of a community that the city basically is responsible for. And it's the manager's role to make sure that those things get taken care of. And they do that with the policies we set out, set out. But I think it's important, and to, to repeat what some of the other councilmembers have said, is that we have to realize that the city of 85, 8,600 people is made up of rich people, is made up of poor people, is made up of the whole color spectrum of diversity. And we need a manager who is going to be able to deal with how those issues, economic stability, infrastructure, housing, code enforcement, affects residents. So, I, I think that in the questioning, to, in my opinion, was she was the most affected, effective in explaining how the city manager can have, can play a role in making sure that those things take place. I'll repeat what Councilmember Lawler said, the examples of success in terms of securing funding, in making sure that blighted or derelict buildings were turned into useful purposes. I think that's right up our alley in the term, in terms of what the city is facing. And, you know, I would push back against anyone who would say that, well, I won't even go there.
Thank you.
Basically, the council has worked hard this year. It's working hard, and I think that the master plan that we have and the rules that we've put in place, I think that Mrs., or Ms. Rufus will be an excellent city manager candidate to implement those goals, and she has my support. And so, is there any further comment from council this evening? Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We've extended a conditional offer of employment to Latonya Rufus for, to be the next city manager of the city of Albion. Item B, request approval to discuss city attorney legal opinion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The city attorney, I can't even describe this, probably what it is. The city attorney released to council a legal memo last week. It's protected by attorney-client privilege. We want to make this as, as much as possible few and far between, but I think considering what has been asked of the council and some concerns that have been raised, we want to make sure that the public has the appropriate understanding of the issue that has been brung before us on several occasions. So, is, we'll do a, just to be safe, we'll do a roll call vote to allow that to be discussed.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Okay, so, I'll, I'll kick off and then hand it over. So, so basically, there were a number of residents who reached out to me with concerns regarding, well, not just to me, but to the council, and to, I guess, another council person who has public housing in their precinct regarding the role of the, in terms of the Housing Commission, the role of council, the role of the Housing Commission Board, and the role of, the role of HUD. And so, I asked Attorney Harkness to provide counsel with a memorandum to explain all of that, and he did. And so, I'm gonna provide him an opportunity to just summarize basically how it all, how they fit together, and then what the essentials are of each of their responsibilities.
So, I'll, I'll be somewhat brief because I'm kind of battling to sort of throw here and make it all the way through.
Oh, can you move your mic a little?
So, the, the opinion I was requested to give was the interplay between the relationship between the Housing Commission, the council, and housing and urban development, which I'll just refer to as HUD. And what I've outlined for the council is, is essentially each of their three individual roles. And what I highlight is that there's, there's a limited interaction between the Housing Commission and the city council, primarily because the Housing Commission is an entity of statute and it's a separate legal entity from, from the city of Albion in that it's a, it's a, it's its own public corporation. It can sue and be sued. It, it is a, a sub-authority of the city, but it is a separate authority. So, what I've outlined in section two of the memo is, is largely all of the power that the commission has, for example, to purchase and sell and transfer property that it owns, to determine what areas of the city are in need of low, low-income housing and provide proper housing facilities for those areas, to supervise parks, to determine what rents are gonna be charged for those projects, the things of that nature. The Housing Commission itself has complete control over the housing project as it relates to construction, maintenance, and operations. Where the city council comes into play is the council's responsible for appointment and/or removal of the directors of the board, of the, how, the actual Housing Commission. The council can establish limits on the expenses paid to the commission. It can set either threshold salaries for certain employees or require approval of the salaries that are going to be, or recommended by the commission. Those are, to, to exercise those powers, the council has to enact resolutions regarding those. And the other big thing is that the council can, not only does the commission have to make an annual report to the council, but the council can request additional information that it needs or requires. Lastly, excuse me, the interaction with HUD is, is more limited. Basically, HUD's authority comes from the fact that it, it places restrictions on the grant money that it provides to the Housing Commission. So, the, the best way that I can analogize it for the council is you think about it like federal highway funds, for example. The, the government says, you know, we'll give you this money to improve the highway, but you've got to keep the speed at 55. The same concept applies to the Housing Commission. So, HUD includes using any federal funds for, for non-US citizens who are here illegally. It can say what the income thresholds have to be for people that are gonna use public. It can say, here are the standards in terms of the quality of the public housing. It can mandate inspections and it can't discriminate. So, and then it can obviously terminate the funding based on non-compliance. So, that's just a broad stroke of the interaction between three entities. That's where I outlined the question. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I guess you can ask me what the, the, because I had to look each one of them up for you.
So, one, so just, and, and then I'm gonna go to Councilmember Barnes. So, so if we had to summarize it, I guess, in three words for each, the Housing Commission Board handles the construction, maintenance, and operations of the housing, public housing facilities.
Yes.
The council oversees board appointments and removals, compensations of the various officers and board members to a certain extent, and can require reporting beyond the annual report on pretty much anything that we, we'd be interested in by resolution.
Yes.
Okay. And then HUD just, and then, and then, and the final thing is HUD comes in, and it's basically like, you know, like you said, if we have any other kind of federal grant, there's strings attached for the money.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes?
Col, this is not to be negative, however, the appointment power of the Housing Commission Commission is unilateral and autonomous to the mayor. He doesn't have the power, he doesn't have that power. We have the power. If he nominates one to remove, then we can come in and vote for the removal.
Correct.
This is an oversight, and secondly, I had asked, could I have this release to Senator Amash, HUD, and my private civil attorney? I emailed everyone, and I saw it on here for discussion. I was wondering if I could give this to my attorney.
Well, they voted tonight, so I'm pretty much for numbers.
I'm cool.
And just, and just to be clear, because the attorney did an excellent job, and I appreciate the timeframe in which he produced this, but if you look at section three, item one, it says the appointment of commission members by the mayor. So, he didn't overlook that. It was in the memo.
Okay, I'm just doing the move.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, because this was a confidential communication between our attorney and council, we weren't, it couldn't be explicitly stated on the agenda.
Uh-huh, that's correct.
So, citizens didn't have a chance to comment during the agenda item portion.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to open that up or to wait till the end of the meeting?
Probably wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, like I said, I want to thank Attorney Harkness for the excellent work and, and actually very easy to understand and very concise, and that hopefully will provide some clarity for residents who've asked those questions and also for council members. So, again, thank you, Attorney Harkness.
You're welcome.
Item C, request approval, resolution 2018 dash 20, a resolution authorizing the sale of beer and wine from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Sundays. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Attorney Harkness?
So, if I, excuse me, if the council recalls, one of the local businesses approached council about, there's currently, and the clerk can correct me, but I want to say about eight years ago, maybe seven, the council passed a resolution as part of, as allowed by the Michigan Liquor Control Committee to ban all alcohol sales on early Sundays, meaning from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Sundays. One of the local businesses approached the council because they want to, they want to serve brunch on Sunday mornings, but because the business entity is a brewery, they're not permitted to operate just for food sales. They have to also be able to serve their, their product, which in this case is beer. So, what's required then is a resolution allowing for the sale of beer and wine from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Sundays. There's two things I want to point out to council that you're not authorizing the early morning, early Sunday morning sales of what's referred to in the Liquor Control Committee as spirits, meaning hard liquor. If you're just authorizing beer and wine. The other thing I want to make clear is this is not limited to just one entity. Hypothetically, any other business in town, whether it's the grocery store, gas stations, wherever, can all now apply for that early morning sale permit from the Liquor Control Commission. I'm not saying that they would all get it. I think it's probably likely that they would get it, but I wanted to make it clear, and I think, I think what this particular business is, is doing is great, but I, and I don't want to seem like I'm trying to sway the council away. I just want to make it clear that this is not limited to one business. This would be a citywide lift of this particular portion of the ban.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a question. I think it's for Attorney Harkness. Not sure who can answer, but the, the particular business that came before council and asked for this knows that we're acting on this tonight, but other businesses who could potentially apply for this license through the state, are we required to notify them of this change?
No.
So, how will they know?
You'll tell them.
You can tell them.
Well, thank you.
Uh, interim, oh, interim manager, Kim.
That information's listed on the LCC's website, so you could go there and find that. If they were looking at their liquor licenses or whatever, it would give that information to them.
The state, did you say the state?
Councilmember Barnes?
On their, on the state's website.
Could you repeat that? I missed the beginning of what you said.
The information is listed on the state, the LCC's website, Liquor Control Commission's website, so it'll show on there that we allow this now, so anybody could find that information. And if you have a liquor license, I'm sure they know where to go to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
It might take a little bit of time because we'll have, and assuming that the council approves it tonight, is that the clerk is gonna have to transmit it to the Liquor Control Commission, and then I assume there'll probably be a slight delay before that's available. But I know that we have had businesses, I think in the last year, that have asked us for those early morning permits, but we've informed them that they weren't available because of the 2010 resolution.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one more question. I know when this was originally brought before council, there were some concerns about timing and having this business have it available before the festival weekend. So, is that, how has that issue been addressed? And is it possible that they could have this license prior to the weekend? That's my question. I don't know if anybody followed up on that or not.
I haven't spoken to them, whether they've contacted the LCC and actually taken care of their end of this or not. My assumption would be upon approval tonight, that would take care of our end of it, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, we'll proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
She said yes.
Okay, sorry. Reed?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We have approved, I'll repeat that back, approved this resolution that will authorize the sale of beer and wine from 7:00 a.m. to noon on Sundays. Okay. Item D, Request Approval Resolution 2018 dash 21, To Approve Initial Payment, Installment, Purchase Agreement, and Set Date for Annual Payment of Vector Truck.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, okay. Is Director Leonardson?
Good evening, council, and Mayor.
Hey, Jim.
Basically, what we're looking for is just a resolution to approve the installment purchase with Chemical Bank. I don't recall if it's set up annually or semi-annually, but we need your permission to do that. There has been a delay. I thought this was taken care of some time ago, let's say.
I thought we moved it.
As I understand it, there's been some issues between the vendor that we bought the truck from and the attorney that set it up and Chemical Bank, so hopefully this will be the end of it, and it'll be the last we have to discuss it.
Is there any discussions from council? Councilmember Spicer?
What happened again, Jim? Can you just repeat that because your voice kind of trailed?
There was some miscommunications between, we had to basically hire an attorney to draft the paperwork. Banks don't do that anymore for the whole purchase of the vector truck. So, as I understand it, there was a miscommunication between not only the attorney and Chemical Bank, but there was some outstanding issues with the vendor as well. They had to communicate, get together, basically coordinate the paperwork, and that didn't happen, so that's why it's before us tonight.
Not this time.
Okay, because this was approved, we discussed this quite long, how old, several months ago, wasn't it?
We approved the purchase.
It's been some time.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you mentioned you had to hire an attorney?
Correct. A special attorney.
Okay, so what was that expense and where is that coming from?
That was rolled into the expense of the truck, and as I remember, I explained that at the time. I want to say it was eleven or twelve hundred dollars or so.
So, maybe I'm misunderstanding what we needed the special attorney for. If you, you said you mentioned it at the time.
As I recall, it was all brought forth when I brought all that information about the truck forward.
So, what does the special attorney do? I thought, what I thought you said was that we had to get a special attorney to address whatever had happened here in this few months of lapse.
No.
And it's not...
We had to get a special attorney that deals in those kinds of purchases for governmental entities. That attorney was the initial attorney that was brought up initially, and evidently there was some, as I said earlier, some miscommunication between those other three parties.
Okay.
And therefore, that's why we're here tonight. So, basically, what we're looking for is just permission to enter into the installment purchase plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, seeing no, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. So, we have approved item D, which is to approve the installment purchase agreement and to set the date for the annual payment for the vector truck. Item E, Discussion or Approval, City Attorney, Accountant, probably something in there. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded.
Attorney Harkness? So, if you'd have a brief, happy to... As you had, my review with the city council, and I obviously said that in a closed session, so I won't go into that, but the general consensus that I get is that, as a whole, the council seems to be pleased with the work that our office is doing, and I say my office, because again, it's not just me, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Lauren Elster, who's my associate attorney and the assistant city attorney that does a great deal of work with the city, but she's kind of, doesn't, doesn't make it to council meetings as much as I would like. That may be in the future, but, and our office staff as well. The only change that you've got before is, I have, our office has requested a slight revision of the annual revenue from the current contract of $8,500, this is $3,000, requesting the change back to January 1st so as not to impact the current budget year. So, there won't be any change and you can have any issues with the general fund. I wanted to avoid any issue there. The, everything else, contract remains. And I hope you answer any questions.
Just a clarification for the public. Can you, the extent of the retainer is pretty extensive, so basically in terms of the work that you do for the city, the contract, there were kind of, there were some stuff, but by now, you do pretty much everything.
Yeah, the way that the, there were previous derivations of the contract that set things up where there was a certain retainer for certain work, and then it broke out into a more powerful, made the more, for the city and wrapped one retainer, so that regardless of how much increase in work is, know what you're going to be, there's some basis that is more of the... And then, I guess I didn't mention, one of the big reasons that the slight increases is where we started, a lot of effort, facility, and our, far, too many, I think, and just ended up, myself and the clerk, who, we talk just about every other day about those. But that's one of the primary reasons we're asking for that increase, and part of the way that we've set that up is that, well, obviously did that.
Seeing no further, is there any discussion from council? Okay. I'd ask for a roll call vote, and this will be...
January 1st.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Reed? Mayor?
That's approved, the, I guess, can increase after the evaluation for the attorney's office. I have required approval of Astor, Astor Parking Lot project with an additional, well, it's a different...
Yeah, well, I can explain this.
I'll just say with, you know, additional fun, additional cost to the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support?
Moving support, interim manager Kip.
So, after the last meeting, I was aware that I wasn't aware of exactly what it was that we had, the work on the Astor, and the grant that we were given. Going back, I found out that there was a difference between costs of $28,656 and additional to the result of the, of the actual project being raised after it, than we thought it was going to be. There's another sheet that I brought in with a lot of numbers. I went back to the engineers, that is the least we can do to reduce the cost of this parking. These are the things they were able to change to reduce the cost. And we've reduced the cost from that additional $28,656 down to $4,183. So, the difference was not the initial to be.
Say it again?
The original was additional cost of $28,656, the current now is $4,183.
And just for residents' understanding, what we're talking about is the city owns the parking lot behind the new brewery, and I think this all started because the incline of the parking lot was such that when it rained, the water was going to flow towards the buildings on Superior and would maybe potentially do some foundation damage, so...
And we also gained some additional property to go with it to widen the lot as well.
Yep. And, and, and you might want to just, I mean, I don't know if you were, Jim, on the table, what was taken out, like the...
Yeah, so there was a curb island put in because on certain square footage of parking lots, you're required to have green space. This doesn't meet that square footage, so we were able to take that curb green island out, actually add a couple more parking spots, I believe, which reduced the cost significantly there. We've checked, I don't think we're 100% on the sand sub base.
Not at this point. We have checked.
Right.
With mull and shovel today.
We believe it's there, and that'll reduce the cost, which is number one. Then, there's also, there was also an issue where the property line was on that, and which actually resulted in moving the parking lot back a little bit closer to Astor, which again, saved some cost in the parking lot as well.
Do you, okay, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. So, now you throw me all the way off. Okay? Can you give the total cost of the project and the total cost of what the city is being asked to spend?
The original grant that you approved was for $58,000 and some change. I don't know exactly what that number is. Fifty-eight, $5,500 roughly?
So, is that, wait...
That was the original grant approval.
Don't confuse me, Scott.
Okay.
Okay. I need the total cost of the project and then the total cost of what the city is paying.
Well, I was working on what the city's paying.
Okay, so what is the city being asked to pay?
The original, the original grant was for $118,000.
Okay.
Which covered all the costs.
Okay.
It was basically split in half with the grant covering 59 and the city covering 58.5 or somewhere in there.
Okay.
Now, with what we figured out, there's an additional cost of $4,183 to the city.
Was there an increase to the grant amount?
No. No. We tried, they refused, they said they had no more extra money.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so basically, what happens, we applied for the whole thing for grant.
Right.
USDA said, no, we're going to give you half. So, we came back and said, okay, we'll do the other half. And then we had the issue with engineering costs that came in.
No, well, originally, the grant was applied for in February 2017. I can't think of the company or the agency.
USDA.
USDA. And the grant for half, and I think it was, remember that, approved that part of it? So, we were going to go into the spring and bid this, but Superior Street got down again, and we didn't want to close parking lot and the street at the same time, so we waited and bidded later in the fall. So, we're a year and a half into the original, um...
Right cycle. Project?
Well, the estimates, the original estimates. And so, there's cost increase in that. I gave one example of curb and gutter went from $12 to $14 an hour up to $28 an hour, so there's a huge change in just costs there. It was almost $5,000 increase in costs, so...
And if I'm not mistaken, as well, that, during that period is when the city picked up that additional footage to the west from the Calhoun County Land Bank, which increased the scope of the project a little bit as well, so it kind of grew on top of the price differences.
Okay. So, thank you all for, I guess, the engineering too, for finding those cost savings, because that was kind of concerning. Councilmember French?
When you say conduit?
We...
You're not putting in conduit, but isn't...
There was, in the island that we had, I recommended that we have some way of running electricity to it in case we want to light in with no island, no lights, no conduit.
Thinking maybe, okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion from council? Thank you. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We've approved the additional cost to refurbish the Astor Parking Lot. Item G, Discussion or Approval of Repair and/or Replacement of the City Hall Boiler. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who wants it?
Jim?
Why did you even sit down, Jim?
Your boiler.
You knew. You knew it was coming, Jim.
Paperwork around here. Council, you should have had in your packets tonight, first mechanical, two cost estimates. A boiler in the basement of City Hall is currently out of service, would not pass inspection. They basically tagged it out of service as not being safe.
Thanks.
We're looking at potential repairs of $9,846, or replacement of $62,614, which potentially has a rebate of about $3,000. The boiler itself is, it was installed in 1977, which if you do the math, that's 41 years old. My opinion, I think we need a new boiler, I really do. The new system, they're going to do some changes to the chimney, the current way that the boiler functions as far as pumps and things, because there's water that flows through them, they'll be able to reduce, I believe, one or two of the pumps that's currently in it, it's going to have a closed loop system with one pump. They estimate that we're currently operating about 65% efficiency. New boiler will take us to 95% efficiency. I've asked to see a comparison as to time of return on that, but I've yet to receive it, so, I mean, you're talking 30% difference, 25 to 30% increased efficiency, so I would think that it wouldn't be too long before we would pay for it.
Councilmember French?
So, how much are we paying right now for power? I can do that math for you right now.
For fuel?
Yeah.
It's natural gas, but...
It's natural gas, and I don't really have those in front of me currently. I did get that information based on cubic foot of usage to the manufacturer, in this case, First Mechanical, and as I say, I haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
Tom also has some budget information that you might want to hear as well.
So, Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Which fund is this coming out of?
I'm sorry?
Which fund is this coming out of?
It'll be out of the general fund budget.
Okay. Councilmember Spicer?
So, then, can you give us, coming out of the general fund, so either way, we have to go with the 98, say $10,000, and the 59, which includes the rebate, so we're looking at $49,000. Where do, where does this leave our general fund budget if we were to...
I'll let the finance director fill it out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tommy, finance director. As interim city manager Kip pointed out, when we realized we had to do something, we knew this would probably be a question that you guys would ask, which rightly so. So, what I did is I went and took a look at some of the changes that we, the known changes, I guess, that we've had here today, because a lot has happened in 2018 that all happened after we approved the 2018 budget. So, having said that, going back, and if you recall, not quite a year ago, we approved the 2018 budget with expenditures exceeding revenues of $172,000. What that means is basically, we said, we are projecting that our revenues are going to be short that much, but we have money in the fund balance, we will cover that $172,000 out of fund balance. So, the fund balance plus our revenues then would balance our budget. That's, if you remember, that's how we balanced the budget for 18. But a lot has happened since then. Biggest thing, obviously, we have a lot of savings in some positions, because we did not have an assistant city manager for most of the year, we did not have a city manager most of the year. The deputy court treasurer started halfway through the year, started in June, when we had put it in the budget for a full year, and then in addition to their salaries, we also had the benefits and stuff to go with them. Those right there is going to be roughly about $57,000 in savings to the general fund. In addition to that, one thing we didn't know about when we did the budget, if you recall, our property taxes have been declining every year from 2008 to 2017, when it finally leveled out. We budgeted basically at a... We budgeted basically at a level, continuing a leveling trend, and it actually increased. So, when we got the real numbers for eighteen, property taxes are actually up. I am kinda going on a limb, but I think conservatively, I'm hoping for about an extra eighty thousand in property tax that we had not budgeted, because we didn't know that they were increasing. The other thing too, is we currently have received enough medical marijuana applications. We got seventy thousand dollars in the general fund from the medical marijuana applications. Again, something we didn't have in the budget, 'cause we weren't aware of it.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yep.
Did you say seventeen, like seven zero or seventeen?
Seven zero, seventy.
Of application?
Yes, seventy thousand.
That's a lot of applications. And those are just applications?
Just applications, correct.
So, go ahead.
Oh, okay, and I'm about done.
Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
But I just thought this might be a good thing, you guys might be wanna, it's kind of some good news, something you wanted to hear. Then, in addition to that, there are a few things that, that impacted it negatively. Uh, I, I guess, let me recap first. Going on the positive side, I figure somewhere maybe around two hundred and forty thousand additional that we didn't know about when we did the budget, either through savings or additional revenue. Now, on the flip side, of course, there's like a few unknowns that go the other way. We have, I think our, our streetlights are gonna be over budget this year, I'm not sure why, they're running higher. Um, when we get ready to do the budget information, we'll be asking to do an amendment to the streetlights. Uh, about fifteen thousand, I'm hoping we'll cover it. Our tree trimming, uh, we're running high there, we got a lot of trees that, uh, people have been calling and complaining of falling down, or limbs falling, or whatever. Maybe another ten thousand or so there. We had, in the budget, we had, uh, city manager Mitchell had put some number of forty-seven thousand five hundred in there of selling unused city assets. Well, in the absence of the city manager, no progress was really made on that. So, I'm conservatively taking it out, along with a few other miscellaneous things that I think we probably won't hit, uh, which comes up to a shortage or a unexpected, uh, impact negatively of about eighty-three thousand. But if you look at what that does, so we approved the budget saying we think we'll be about a hundred and seventy-two thousand short in revenue, we'll take it out of fund balance. With these changes, it's looking more like that shortage will be about fourteen, fifteen thousand. If, barring no other unforeseen things. So, significantly better than...
But that, that includes the boiler?
No.
Okay.
That's true today. Now, that's your call.
Okay. And where are we with the fund balance currently? You know, where's the fund balance currently?
Well, it's hard to look at, um, mid-year, because so many things are seasonal. Like, we don't have all the, uh, property taxes, we don't have revenue sharing all the way in, property tax is not doing it. So, right now, you look at it mid-year, and it's gonna show a larger loss, because those seasonal revenues haven't come in yet. But we ended, um, we were at, what, a million two? I'm going by memory, was it, I unfortunately didn't print that, I just looked at kinda where we... Yeah, it was somewhere in that ballpark, yeah. So, so, I mean, I, I know it's well over a million, I mean, that we, if we have to... Like I said, we approved it originally, saying we could afford to take hundred and seventy-two thousand out of it.
So, my, so I guess my question is, if we, if we approve the boiler with the, with the discount, is, that's not gonna put us lower than what we had in that specific...
Because my, it, again, other things can change, but where we're at right now, we're looking at the original being a hundred and seventy-two thousand coming out of fund balance, just to balance the budget. If you approve the boiler, say, sixty thousand or so with rebate, sixty-two, sixty-three, whatever the figure was Jim had, with another fourteen, fifteen, so you're looking at maybe, you know, seventy, eighty thousand short versus a hundred and seventies.
Do we need to go out and bid? Do we need to go and bid?
I thought it would be a bad idea.
Okay.
It's over the range, we can do that.
Yeah. So, we might get a better price, maybe?
Again, please bear in mind, it is September.
Yeah.
Players' place interest. So...
We can get, we can get prices, though.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I think, granted, we haven't finished the year, but I think if we're able to finish with ha- having to remove less out of fund balance than we had budgeted, that's a good thing, and then hopefully, um, 'cause you mentioned the seventy thousand that we're getting just from applications, so if, if those businesses are up and running, hopefully, the, you know, 'cause I think every year, they're gonna have to reapply. They have to redo the life.
Correct.
Yeah. So, that's gonna be coming in, and then any kind of additional, whatever, um, property taxes, income taxes we get, you know, eventually, we'll have to have a discussion, I know this is slightly off, about maybe having, um, kind of partition the fund balance to have, you know, maybe like certain parts of it restricted. And so, I think that's something, that's a conversation that was, we had during the council goal, so I, I say all to say, I think we should do it, and I support it.
Well, and this would be a capital expense too, that we've talked about. Additionally, I don't think Tom mentioned this, we've met with Blue Cross, well, not Blue Cross, but our insurance agent, and our, uh, health insurance is going down by four percent for next year as well, which actually starts October first, I believe. So, um, that was some good news for a change too, because that's usually going up more than four percent, so...
Is there any other questions or discussion from council?
One, can I bring one more thing up while we're talking money? Um, we also got some federal funds, or state funds to, for projects that we've already approved a lot of additional funds for, that they're gonna reimburse us, so, uh, Jim can probably explain that a little better.
If you recall, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, project, uh, went well over budget. Council has approved, um, a hundred and seventeen-plus thousand dollars worth of dewatering alone. Um, we currently, they've basically submitted another bill to us for dewatering for ninety-one thousand, uh, which I am trying to get reduced. We're basically looking at about three hundred and twenty thousand dollar overage on that project. Two hundred and some thousand of it is obviously the dewatering that was not anticipated. Uh, the other portion was the additional pump that council okayed. We did have some good news from M E D C's office recently, uh, thanks to Senator Knopf. We are going to receive yet another five hundred thousand dollar, uh, special legislative grant to offset the overage on that project, and the remainder was dictated towards another project.
Excellent.
So, all those are funds that were approved by council now have been reimbursed, so...
Excellent. Is there any further comment, uh, from council? Okay, so I'll ask a roll call vote, and this is to approve, um, to look in the cost for the boilers and to proceed with that. Uh, Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yep.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, future, oh, excuse me, we, we, we approved the repair, or, excuse me, for the, well, we approved a, a procedure for the replacement of the city boiler. Um, future agenda items. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Barnes, Attorney Harkness.
Um, so, the four oh nine Ash Street announcement that we approved? I talked to Attorney Harkness, and there were some unexpected things that came up with that, so I'm asking that we, um, they prepare to bring that before council for our next meeting.
Yep, okay. Councilmember Barnes?
I would like to ask that six oh eight Austin, uh, demolition, uh, give us an update on that demolition.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Harkness?
Um, I have a draft of the ethics ordinance, should be ready for the council to review at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, Councilmember French?
City rules, council rules?
Yes. Um, and I'm going to add, I've, um, I'm gonna be brief, but basically, in November, there's gonna be three statewide proposals, um, and two of them, uh, proposal two and proposal three, touch on basically some very basic functions of, of our democracy in terms of voting access and, and, and what our votes actually mean, and how meaningful they are. Um, so I'm, I'm asking that we, um, do a resolution for those, um, and, and have some presentations from the, from the sponsoring organizations for Prop two and Prop three. And that's for the October first meeting. Is there any, are there any further future agenda items? Councilmember French, uh, Reed?
Uh, the city, uh, picket is the twenty-eighth of this month in Victor Park, uh, four to three?
One second.
Four to three?
Yes.
Okay. And I need to see all council people after this meeting for just a minute.
Let's count them comments.
No, I need to look at your person.
Okay. Um, are there any other future agenda items? Okay, uh, we will move on, everyone is here. Public comments, persons addressing the city comments, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, and please state your name and your address. Are there any public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Latoya Johnson, and I reside at six zero eight South Dalrymple Street here in Albion. I'm here on the behalf of a group of concerned tenants of the Albion Housing Commission. Many tenants are afraid to speak out publicly in fear of retaliation from management. We have been unsuccessful in getting a valid response from board members, were contacted. I have spoken to many city, many council members, and now I am asking the mayor and the council to step in and help with these concerns. Our list of concerns are, um, rules of the lease are not being enforced fairly. Some tenants are targeted for various reasons, while others get away with much worse. Our freedom is being taken away. Security camera was set up in a vacant unit to spy on my apartment. What are the tenant rights? The hearing officers are people who work with management, so the grievance process is unfair. Albion Police is being used to scare tenants when we get letters about bar individuals. Tenants are being evicted for using drugs and alcohol and selling drugs, but management hires maintenance workers who do those various things. Uses drugs, alcohol, and sell drugs, and they have access to our homes, we do not feel safe. Money being spent unappropriately on cars, trips, um, paying so-called employees under the table that's not on the payroll, while our units need repairs and attention. Unprofessionally conned up by management, taunting, spying, and nor a lot of tenant complaints. I'm asking that you please take these concerns seriously and move ahead with addressing them however you can help us. Thank you.
Is there any further public comments this evening?
Mike Bearman, one one oh one six twenty-nine Mile Road temporarily. But anyway, uh, I'm here to talk to you about a couple things. One is, I've been your representative for workforce development now for the last four years. I was on the measures for workforce development and the contract committee for workforce development, working on getting Michigan Works more to the east side of the county. As of last Friday, I resigned from that. I cannot do the job that I need to be able to do for you guys, and I have not been getting support in the area of trying to bring more jobs to this area. Right now, I can tell you, you've got a lot of jobs open. And if we don't get people to start working these jobs, we're not gonna get the factories to come in here, because they're not gonna come to a place that they can't find workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comments?
Rob?
I'm Rob Reed, I live at four one four Allen Place. I spent the better part of my last years of career as the director of executive development for a newspaper corporation of twenty-five thousand employees located in Miami, Florida. And I've got to admit that in looking at the candidate that you have selected tonight, in the public Q and A, I had trouble finding the qualities you did. In fact, my notes to myself said that I had no confidence that she had knowledge of finance, of engineering management, or of human resources. I even thought that she had a mistaken interpretation of our finances, of the school situation here, of the presence of an excellent college, or of our innovative restoration plans. But that gets buried now, as you have made your decision, and it's terribly important to go ahead. I hope to see you, Mayor Brown, offering the assistance, the education, and the support that your city manager is going to need. It's going to be, if you serve another term, a very core part of your job. You made a reference earlier to how important it would be to have her on board for budgeting, yet I did not see budgeting experience in her background. At any rate, she is our city manager, if she accepts your proposal, and I will welcome her. Or, we may see the more obvious truth that has been worn out in some of your practices, and that what you have done is hired the most pliable potential person for you to be able to control and manipulate without the pesky interference of community information. I hope that's not the case. I make this statement simply, if it seems too personal, my apologies. I make this statement as a registered-to-vote citizen.
Is there any further public comments?
Yes, my name is Christina Estrada, and I reside at six hundred South Dalrymple Street here in Albion. I got concerns for, as far as some of my other tenants that live out by me, of the Albion Housing Commission. We are having some concerns by not being treated fairly. Everybody's different, everybody's different.
Point of order. Go ahead, just one second, go ahead, Councilmember.
This is not germane to the Albion City Council. Albion City Council has no authority over the policies and procedures of the hiring or the executive director and her decisions. Colin gave us a legal situation on what we have. The mayor has authority to appoint members to the commission. We have no jurisdiction over any of the complaints that have come forward. I would ask that you direct those complaints directly to the executive director, the Albion Housing Commission, Detroit HUD, Justin Amash, and Grand Rapids. This is not germane to the council.
So, um, this is probably the most germane, most democratic period of our meetings. Public comment that is not addressed to, to agenda items is a period for residents or non-residents to address the council about anything, anything in our city. Um, so, as long as they're not talking about foreign relations with a foreign country. As they talk about public, it's, I'm going to, and say something about the mayor, and I'll have to be quiet. Um, so, so, I'm ruling that, I'm, made a point of order, our rule, if you just, yep. So, I rule that are absolutely germane, is the most democratic part of our meetings. Uh, Councilmember Barnes has made an appeal, and we're gonna have a, a roll call vote to allow the citizen to continue speaking. Um, council member, excuse me, Clerk Domingo. This is, excuse me, this is, this is whether Councilmember Barnes's point of order, um, is in order, and if you find that it's not, you vote no, if you find that it is, you vote yes.
I think you may have missed a step, Mayor. I think Councilman Barnes would have to motion to appeal, which would have to then be seconded, and then...
I, I think he can appeal without...
What about the legal question?
Okay.
Ask of a lawyer?
We can ask.
The lawyer?
We can ask.
Situation of citizen comment.
Okay. I'll do it. Is there, is a motion, is there a second to Mr. Barnes's motion before we vote, actually? Okay, there's no second. Failure to secure a second means that the appeal fails and my ruling stands. You may continue.
Okay, everything that's been said about how we have our rights and within our lease and all of our stuff, I heard him make a point earlier about how just like they can sue us, we can sue them. That's what he said in his little thing about, you know, housing. And I understand that the Housing Commission has its own board, just like you guys have your own board. But with that being said, how do we, for us, for our tenants, we go onto our board, we get, go into our meetings, it's up to that one person and if that one person denies it, we're done, we have to go. So what good is it for us to go, they send us through loops, we have to do every day, just us to do nothing? Like that, of what that board is required to do, but it stays that way. We don't have, we have to help, have gone besides going through the, it's already there. So who's supposed to do this, who's supposed to help us? If they're, you know what I mean? They say that that's what they're there for. We go to this board, we call HUD, we call this, but it's already up to that one specific person. That one specific person always, it's always a no-go. And I'm not saying that I, you know what I mean, it's, this is for me, this is for what, I've already had, you know, my, my meetings, my everything, that's how it is. But this shouldn't be like this for everybody who lives out there. There are other people going through this who won't stand up. It's just, but we have to file procedure. What kind of procedure do they have to follow if we have to follow, you know? So it's a lose-lose. So I'm not, you know, like, I understand we're coming here, you guys have your own board, it's not like you guys can just go vote and say this is how it's going to be for them, but we're trying to look for some guidance to help us figure out what is our next move if that board automatically just, we lose, we don't get a say-so, we don't get another, and that's just how it is.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening?
My name is Liny Brewer, um, from 1200 Hillside. Um, well, I can kind of relate to what the young lady is saying because when I go in there and, you know, my concern about how things going on in there, I can't even talk to her. Uh, I have to talk through the window and when I set up appointment, I still can't talk to her and I don't even live up there. So I can understand if I can't go and get a meeting with her and sit down and talk about the condition, what's going on up there, I know they going through, you know, through heck, trying to resolve issues of concern. So like she's saying, if, if she can't go to the people that can really make a difference and make an impression and impact and make things better to where that condition is, because there's a lot of people saying that they can't even smoke in their house, they got to go outside, okay, that's fine, but they pay rent up there. They can't have company, so if I invite a company over and she finds out, I get evicted. So we're not, these people got a right to live the way they want to, as long as it's not legal, and they should be able to live the way they want to. That's as sudden for them to have to live like they in a penitentiary, you know, and that's sad. And people can't understand and can't see that. Now, further than the voting part, I'm, I don't know anything about the candidate, but I tell you what, my last 10 years of coming here, I didn't feel like I got no justice for the previous people that were sent into this board. I didn't plead, plead for different cases. So with this board right here, I'm going to let you guys know, y'all the most open, diverse people that listen to our problem. I feel like you the only one that really heard what we were saying and, and really came out and embraced what Double Vision and Liny, Donny was going through. So I appreciate you guys and don't pay no attention to all this, oh, you new fresh stuff because everybody get elected in office, that's who they want. And you continue to put your head up and do your job, don't worry about who got a problem with it because I'm going to tell you just like that, in any position I got voted into and I served three boards as president, all my board people wanted me. So I didn't care nothing about what somebody said about who knew who fresh, it's a learning experience for everybody. So thank you.
Okay, is there any further public, public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Koyana Davis and I reside at 603 East Broadwell here in Albion, Michigan. I just wanted to come before you today to put a face with a name that will be on the ballot for the upcoming election here in November. I am running for a full-term seat on the Marshall Public School Board of Education. Um, a little bit about myself is I do have 13 years with Michigan Public Schools and I currently serve in the capacity as behavior interventionist for a Calhoun County District. I advocate on behalf and empathize on behalf of a parent as I do have a student at Marshall Public Schools. I also advocate on behalf of students and family as that's what I do daily and have been doing for the better part of my career. Just a real person who believes in fair decisions and decisions that are based upon data and info, information, a voice for not either party, but I just guess my little catchphrase is going to be, I like to play fair. So I, I am an individual thinker and if that sounds like somebody that you would be willing to support, I do urge you in any matter to get out and vote on November 6. On another note, I do want to make one more comment. I also would like, uh, for the city to come out and to support Little Liny's All-Stars at their first home game this Saturday at the Marshall Opportunity High, formerly known as the Albion Senior High. I'm going to be a good time to come back and light up the stadium and get some of those old feelings back and make some new, um, stepping stones for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening?
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick update. So I, my name is Cindy Stanzak and I'm the director of the Albion District Library at 501 South Superior Street, right here in Albion. We're thrilled to see the downtown open again, um, just in time for festival. And so, um, while there's, there's a lot of confusion about the difference between the library and the Friends of the Albion District Library. So for those of you with experience with sort of, um, school backgrounds, it's sort of like the Friends of the Library are to the library like the PTO or the sports boosters are to the school. So because we are Levity Village, we cannot fundraise for ourselves, they are advocates in the community, they hold fundraisers like the Chili Dinner with the Lions Club in March and the Festival of the Forks book sale with the local branch of the AAUW, which is the American Association of University Women. That book sale kicks off this Friday. We have been collecting books from donations and also withdrawals from our own collection, items that don't circ in three years. If they don't leave the shelf, they're clearly not a good fit, we'll find them a home. So that sale kicks off this Friday. Uh, all the hours and information are on the, um, the page. It's a dollar for the hardcovers, 50 cents for the paperbacks for Friday and Saturday. And starting Sunday through the following Thursday during regular business hours, those books are a dollar a bag or box. We will have a ton of bags and a ton of boxes available for you, but if you want to use a dolly and bring in a refrigerator box and fill that baby up, that will be a dollar on your way out and we are happy to see them find a home. Um, we all do, also do want to remind any teachers that might be stocking their classroom libraries that that bag or box is free, free to you as a gift from the Friends and the AAUW for all the hard work that they're doing. Other than that, just a quick reminder, we are back in school session again, which means our Adult Basic Education and GED tutoring program is now back in force. Um, they did take a break during the summertime because, you know, summer break. But they are back, all of our mentors or volunteers, our program is entirely donor-funded. Uh, students who come into the program are given a little assessment to find out which book, what grade level to start them off with, and we move towards them being able to get their GED. If they are part of our program and if they are showing, you know, that they're ready and willing to do the work and that their pre-test shows that they're ready to pass the test, we will actually pay for the test for them out of these donor funds. The GED has four batteries, each one is 37.50 a piece, and we know for a fact that the people who need the degree are the ones who least can afford the tests. So this is how we make that magic happen and we work with them at their own pace. So if you know somebody who did not complete high school, now is the time to get them started again, especially since their kids are back in school. And with seven seconds remaining, I will take any questions.
That, that was impressive.
I was waiting for the cowbell.
Um, I, I think, I, I, I want to thank you for your, you know, I know, I'll, I'll respond during.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further public, uh, comment this evening? Anything about the festival? Eric? Do you want to say anything about the festival?
Everyone, the festival's going on. I'll be up anyway.
Okay.
Any help at 9 o'clock, so you don't have to time it up quick. Festival of the Forks happening, uh, you can see the street is wide open, it's good to go, we're back on the bricks. Um, there's no more stuff, everyone behind Stolper Plaza, we're good to go for, on the festival. Thursday night, there's something at the Bone, dueling pianos to kick it off. Friday night, car show, um, Genesis is, uh, gospel review, everything going on at the library, and then Saturday's the full-on festival day. Um, any council members are going to be in the parades, um, let me know, we've got a spot marked out for you guys, so no need to let me know, just show up, just, we'll have you at the front of the parade. Um, yeah, we're good to go, rain's going to hold off, so.
Ribbon cutting. Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting. Thank you. So, streets wide open, we're going to cut the ribbon at the start of the morning parade at 10 o'clock. Uh, chief city manager interim slash everything else he does is going to lead the parade, we're going to stop basically in front of the Bone Theater. Any council members that are around, mayor, we're going to gather at the beginning, we're going to stretch a ribbon across the street, we're going to cut it, officially opening up Superior Street again, finally. So, um, be around at that first part of the parade for the ribbon cutting and we should have a great festival this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening?
Thank you, Eric Tobin, 409 West Ash. Um, just wanted to, um, ask the council for a letter of support for, um, the road thing because obviously in this case scenario, the county will have to get involved in it. Uh, and so I'd like a letter of support from the council to, um, in support of the road abandonment at that, adjacent to the 409 West Ash, so.
So Gary, I would hope to get your support on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any, is there any further public comment?
Sorry, my clock's still going, so. Um, we do need to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, too. That need, that needs to be on as a public hearing, right? Do we got that? Okay.
Okay. Is there any further public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, city manager report. Go ahead. Eric covered everything I was going to say. Is there any, are there comments from council? Councilmember Barnes and Councilmember Brown?
Um, first I'd like to start off and say, um, I empathize with the residents of the housing, um, situation. I've been there four years myself and I also had some challenges with the office, um, and the commission itself. My relief came from me contacting Senator Justice Amash and his office in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I contacted HUD in Detroit and I got immediate results. I'm asking you to contact the senator who will contact HUD for you directly to his representative. I'm currently in that same situation also. You have presented your situation here, however, I'm not under any understanding what the council can do. It's good that you brought me information, but it's out of our hands, it has to go through the process of HUD. Uh, I'm also, want to ask Cullen this time, can I have that legal opinion that I asked on this process because with HUD right now and with us having received the, uh, contract between the city of Albion, it shows our powers and our non-powers. May I finish my comment, please? Do that be okay?
You can go ahead.
Can I finish my comment? I mean, I, I, I've been taking a beating, you guys have given me pretty good today, but I want to finish my comment.
Nobody stopped you. Nobody, go ahead.
Okay, well, that's the best I can do. I'm up for reelection right now and I want you to understand this, I can share that, I'm letting them know that.
Yeah.
Okay, why can't I?
We're on public time, so you should just continue, but just don't mention the elections.
Okay. My situation is, I'm sitting here as your representative of Precinct 1. I, I love being the council person, however, it's a democratic process and I'm asking you to use that process. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to first of all thank the, um, can I finish my comment, please? I want to thank the tenant who came out tonight and made comments. I, I know that wasn't easy and I have, I have talked to them about their concerns. I had no idea what the council could do, um, how we could assist. I think Attorney Partners has done an excellent job laying out the memo. Um, we won't be able to fix all the problems, but at the last council meeting, I asked for a joint meeting with the board for a discussion. Um, I, I've never seen somebody get upset and pushed back against having a conversation. Two bodies, two public bodies, I, I've never seen such a thing in all my life. But, um, I also want to say that the recommendation to speak to quote-unquote Senator Amash, she's actually not a senator, he is a U.S. State Representative, so I want to correct that error. Um, if you're thinking about reaching out and you Google Senator Amash, you're not going to pull up anything. He is a state rep. But I'm, I'm hoping that council will at least be on board with having a conversation with the Housing Commission Board. I mean, the memo clearly states that the mayor and council, with council approval, can, can remove the board, um, he can make appointments, we can ask for information, which is quote-unquote a conversation. We can, um, adopt resolutions to address compensation. I mean, so there's things that we can do. I, I know originally I've heard, well, there's nothing council can do, there's nothing council can do. It's always good to get an understanding for yourself because people will tell you what they think they know and they're missing form. So again, ladies, I thank you, um, I thank you, Mr. Brewer, for your comments, and again, I recognize that that was not easy, so thanks.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor, and quickly, um, I just want to encourage the residents of Albion to, let's, let's get behind our new city manager if she in fact accepts, you know, because we can use this as a, a decision that can divide the community or that can bring us together. And, um, so I just want to encourage us to not let this divide us, let's keep moving this city forward. We all say we want to see it continue to flourish and thrive and if we are, you know, against, fighting against one another, that's not in the best interest of the city. So I just want to take the opportunity to encourage us to, let's get together, let's move this city forward and the little petty issues that we have with each other in the past, we have, um, you know, a new manager and we're going to be moving forward in a, in a, in a new and great direction, so let's, let's come together and decide that we're going to be a part of the positive change and not a part of the negative. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask for privilege.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay, that's granted, thank you. So a couple of things, I have a couple of things here. I want, I want to thank verbally James Vitrino, who was our consultant for Gov HR. They did a tremendous job, um, they did a tremendous job in the search process and for the first time, I've been on council in October, it will be eight years, and I've been through a number of searches and this was the first time, I think there was some confusion earlier about, um, why we had the Friday session and, and Friday session was to give the public an opportunity, um, to essentially indirectly interview the candidates. Normally when we do council interviews, the public has to sit in the audience and they can't speak and they might have a question and it's not heard, but, um, at the recommendation or the suggestion of our, our consultant, Mr. Vitrino, we scheduled that session on Friday for the public. Um, if a council person came or left, um... If a council person came or left, um, you don't know what their schedule was, but that was, that was essentially for, for the public. Um, and the council had their hearings with a summary of comments that were submitted by the public. So we, Saturday morning, we got a summary of all the comments from the public, so, um, we shouldn't create problems or create controversy where there, there isn't any. I want to point out that there's a Housing Commission Board meeting tomorrow and then I will be working with, um, the chair of the board and the director to see what, how we can set up that joint meeting. We have not had this year, as required by state law, a report from the Housing Commission Director, so we're going to do that, um, that's required, we did it last year.
She's already called and set that out.
Yeah, great, excellent. Um, and, uh, you know, because I, I sympathize with those concerns, I think, I'll repeat what Councilmember Brown says, before we jump out and do anything, we want to make sure that we understand what our role is and what our powers are so that we're acting appropriately. Um, and that's why that memo was requested of the city attorney and he did an excellent job in providing us with that information. Um, oh, and also want to congratulate Bethel Baptist Church. They celebrated their 100th church anniversary yesterday and I know that, um, that was an excellent time and I think that any, you know, 100th anniversaries don't come around always and we're not going to be here for the next one probably. So, um, just wanted to congratulate them and, uh, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor say yes. Yes, thank you. This means adjourn. Nobody.